I would like to, if no objection, to suspend the rules a little bit and have Mayor Abdallah Hamudid rush us as he requested. Yeah, come on, no, no, come through.
Who's going to object?
Mayor, thank you so much for attending our reading.
Of course.
And the floor is yours.
Thank you so much for making the exception to the rules. First and foremost, congratulations to President Mosop, congratulations to newly elected members, elected trustees, trustee Zahar, trustee El-Jahimi. I look forward to working with all of you. I wanted to provide just a few updates. I know the incident came early, came up earlier regarding the young student that was hit by a vehicle pre the new year. A few things that I think are important to communicate, and I want to communicate it through this vehicle as opposed to making individual calls. It makes, makes it a little bit easier for me. First and foremost, in coordination with the superintendent and in communication with many of the school board trustees, the city is moving forward with a traffic study on Ford Road and Shafer, as well as other major areas across the city. One of the other schools will be Miller School on Miller Road. It's important to note that both Ford Road is controlled by the state and Miller Road controlled by the county. We as a city might not have the authority, but what our desired outcome is, based on the recommendations of the traffic engineers, we're going to advocate and lobby for the recommendations with the appropriate bodies. So if that means that we collectively go and lobby the state of Michigan Department of Transportation, or go and lobby the Wayne County Public Services Division, we're hopefully going to do that in coordination with one another to advocate for the best possible outcome. I know many families have come forward advocating for a pedestrian bridge at Ford Road and Shafer. We're asking the traffic engineers to examine that as well. It might not be on Ford and Shafer, it could be at Horga. So we're asking them to look at all possible options similar to what's at Ford and Chase. And although, while we're at it, asking the state of Michigan to look at the Ford and Chase pedestrian bridge. For as long as I've been alive, it's been there and I haven't seen it updated. And so I'm wondering what the lifespan is on these. And so additional measures that were taken, the Dearborn PTA president reached out, Nabil, and he mentioned to me that in many of the schools, he did not notice any school traffic signs that you're entering a school zone. And I hadn't noticed that, but we started, we tasked our DPW team to actually drive around many of our schools and noticed that most of our schools have no school zone signs around them. And so the city is moving forward with the purchase of probably 300 signs that we'll begin installing around all of the buildings within our school areas, just so people understand that you're entering a school zone. In case you did not know, for those that are traveling along Ford Road or auto drive, unfortunately, many of our major schools are actually on major thoroughfares, which makes this all the more difficult. And lastly, I really want to emphasize parental responsibility. Our police department is doing a phenomenal job. This year, we actually have a record-breaking, almost 25,000 citations that we've issued. It's not something you want to go out celebrating, but it's something that we have to do. Reckless driving is the top issue in our city. And what we're finding is the majority of tickets cited are to drivers between the ages of 16 and 24. And that's not by any surprise, these are newly minted drivers who, whose parents have graciously purchased them vehicles with 300, 400 horsepower engines, who have their vehicles tinted with limo tints all around. And we're, we're doing our best to crack down on these practices. But we really want to encourage parents to step up as well, to have these important conversations to these individuals that just recently received their driver's license, that they're more likely to have a car accident in the first several years of driving while they're gaining that experience, and that it's not only their lives that are on the line, but the lives of all those who they share the road with. You know, to, to the young girl who, who is at the hospital, who we pray for each and every single day, you speak to her family and they tell you that, you know, she has a long road to recovery, if it's possible. And I'll leave it at that. And many people's lives were destroyed on that day. And you had an individual that ran a red light, where we believe speeding was a factor, as well as where we know that only 16% of light was able to come through the windshield based on how dark the tint was. 4% of light was able to come through on the driver's side window, and 0% light can come in on the, on the, on the rear windows because of the level of tints that were placed on this vehicle. All of these, you know, there's no one leading factor, all of them come together to create a, just a poor outcome for all of us on the road. So please, have these important conversations. We're doing our part, we're towing vehicles more than ever for reckless driving and speeding. Citations for speeding and reckless driving at an all-time high, and so we're going to continue that up. Wanted to communicate all this, look forward to the further partnership. Congratulations again to the new trustees. And to Dr. Malako, I've never had a council meeting where I thanked my city council, I think I need to go back and add that into my annual, maybe I'll do that before budget season commences. So thank you for that tip. And on that note, thank you all.
Mayor, we may have some questions for you.
Please.
Well, it's more of a comment. So I work out of NewLab, which is a lot of startup and tech companies, and I believe there's a tech company that has had a conversation with you, Haas Alert.
Yeah.
And they, when we were talking about school zones, I know my vehicle does this. When I enter a school zone, I get an alert on my car. Haas Alert does that as well, and I believe they're starting to specifically have a contract with Jeep, now maybe perhaps Fiat. But I feel like that's our city, and I am more than willing and, and happy to continue those conversations, to say, if we are going to now put up the visual, what is the audio? Right? If you're wearing your car and you're entering a school zone, can we have that alert saying that you are entering that? So really leaning into technology that's currently existing, that we have a relationship with, and I know that me, perhaps you have spoken with them as well, but how do we then create this young, if you have the car, and if your parents aren't, if you're going to ignore them, perhaps you can't ignore the car that says, "Slow down."
Yeah. So you stole my thunder. The press release is coming out Thursday. We're actually speaking at one of the NewLab panels on Thursday to this matter. Haas Alert is being installed on all of our police and fire engines. And what this will do is if you're driving a vehicle with the OEM that's opted into Haas Alert, if sirens go off, you'll get a message within your car telling you that a police or fire emergency vehicle is coming through. Upon the successful installation of all of our vehicles, I've already connected with Dr. Malako. It's our hope to then bring it forward to all of our school buses, and so that when the school buses are parked and stopped and the stop signs come out, you'll get the alert if you're coming through near a school bus, that all the alerts will also come up indicating within your OEM that you should stop, slow down, something is ahead of you for, for that purpose. And so we'll be one of the first cities in Michigan that's fully integrated in that fashion between cities and school district, and it's through the partnership that we have. And so, press release will come out Thursday, you took it away, but it's okay.
I'm everywhere.
Nobody's watching.
Hopefully people have checked out at this time on YouTube.
Okay.
Dr. Malako?
So I want to thank the mayor for the outstanding work he does, and he's always available. The collaboration for the school district and city is fantastic. He contacts me, he's, he makes himself available. I also, you know, want to mention specifically, he's got experience in the legislature, and I've been able to tap on him for that in my role as president of MASA, and he's given me great advice. Not only that, but he's helped work with his connections to the legislature, Senator Kamalari and others, Farhat and Burns, to secure funding. We talked about today the acceptance of green school money. You know, there was over $4 million that came to Dearborn, thanks to a lot of the efforts he put together. So I really appreciate, and I know that we continue to meet on a regular basis, that we talk to infrastructure, and it's all about collaboration for the betterment of the school community, for the city, for everyone. So thank you. And we, I will be at the superintendent conference this week, and one of the presentations is about the green school model with Sue Stanley and Jill Choco. I'm kind of their support, I'm not their main person, but all the superintendents will hear about it as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
Trustees Zahar?
So, thanks mayor for your leadership. Obviously, safety of our kids and citizens is our most important duty. With these signs, are, do you have, just so that people understand and so we understand, since like, take Fortson, it's on Ford Road, do you have the authority to put those signs on Ford Road as the, as the mayor?
It's a...
Sorry, we're not...
It's a very difficult question. I'll tell you, some things are, you know, you're going to have to ask for forgiveness than permission.
Okay.
So for us, given Fortson High School, yes, one, one part of Fortson's on Ford Road, but not the other parts, we're trying to explore where we can place them, whether it's near a school property or not, and try to make the argument that, you know, we don't really need permission to place them in these areas. We're going through that process right now.
And I've seen some signs in other communities where, Laura, like, there are school zone signs that light up during open, like, a school letting in and out, is that what things you're looking at?
So these ones are just, just indicate that it's a school zone. We have also purchased several other traffic calming measures. Our public health department received a little over $3 million grant of about 1.5 million is allocated towards traffic calming measures. And so we have like the light-up stop signs that we've been installing, we have 120 we're installing across the city. We have the light-up traffic signs, these indicate when you're crossing, they kind of, the flashing. And so we're trying to see if we can get one installed at the Ford and Shafer intersection, we're, we're communicating with MDOT right now. We'd like it placed at that median where you cross in the middle of Ford Road to the rest. And then speed humps. So we installed the first set of speed humps a little over a year ago at three parks, at Hamlock, Lapeer Park, and at Levigood. And we have 300 more speed humps that have just come in in the last two months, and we're installing those post-spring. Our target areas will be every school and every park across the city, at least covering all sides. We decided that we're not going to blanket neighborhoods with speed humps. The data suggests that they're going to be most effective around schools and around parks to slow down traffic. And the data suggests that after placement of speed humps, 99% of drivers drive within the speed limit.
Thank you.
In the same token, do you have the authority to change the speed, especially on Ford Road?
Ford Road, you must understand, is, is equivalent of a highway. It's the state of Michigan that has the authority to change its speed. It's just one of the, you know, disadvantages of having a major school on Ford Road, but that's controlled by the state of Michigan.
Well, thank you, mayor. We truly appreciate it. Trustee El-Jahami?
Yeah, so Glenn mentioned the collaboration between the district and the city, but I've always saw the mayor, there's a lot of collaboration with the community, and, and you mentioned the speed humps, and, and a lot of things that you've done in the park system. We saw the young people that came in here for baseball. There's so much investments in our parks for our kids, so there's a lot of things being done for our kids by the city. And, and the mayor's always very accessible. I, I always appreciate, whether it's Hamlock, whether it's Lapeer, whether it's, there's so much being done. But I also appreciate the, the quick response when a situation occurs. So this is, you know, what happened to the young lady is very unfortunate, but the quick response that you guys are working on, or the things that you're doing or looking into, is appreciated. It's, in comparison to past, you know, it's, your reaction is very timely, so we appreciate it.
Thank you. Another note, since trustee El-Jahami just spoke, he was a planning commissioner, remember at the city of Dearborn? He can no longer attend because these meetings apparently take precedence. But he, he actually suggested, given the incident that unfolded, was to have presence on the traffic commission. And so we're actually looking to hopefully appoint trustee El-Jahami onto our traffic commission, so that the, the schools will have a voice on the traffic commission, which meets periodically, to discuss these issues. So I think that would be very favorable for the whole city.
We also have the city relations committee, which is comprised of several trustees, as well as yourself and council members, that we, I hope, will meet soon after we form the, the new committees for the new calendar year and meet with you to follow up on all of the things that we have discussed today.
Great. Now, and, and as a citizen, take it off my mayor's hat, we have a whole bunch of new laser-grated baseball diamonds across our city. We welcome the use of our, of our public fields, if you like. We're also building nine new pickleball courts, and so if there's a middle school pickleball team that wants to launch, we'll have fresh courts for you hopefully by the summer. Just want to put that out there as well.
Mr. Gold is, has been very supportive.
Yeah. We have, we have a great team. Great team.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you all so much.
Totally appreciate it.
Thank you, mayor.
Next item, please.
Next item is the action items. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
Any considerations to pull any items? Any questions on any items? I, I do have a question.
Let's wait to get the motion.
Yeah, but let's, let's have somebody move the motion? Or actually, can you read, Mr. Secretary, the recommended action?
Under B.
Sorry. It's my first day. Okay, so, motion to approve action items, I'll call for a single motion to approve all the action items on this agenda, with the exception of any items which have been excluded from this motion by any board member request.
So 1 through 16.
Yeah, you have to fill in the numbers. So trustee Zahar, where it says recommended action, movement, action items numbered 1 through 16 be approved.
Okay. So I move or I ask for a motion?
You read, you read.
I just read. Move that action items numbered 1 through 16 be approved as recommended in this agenda?
Period.
Period.
So move.
Support.
Motion moved by trustee Berry, supported by trustee Petishkov. Any discussion? I do have discussion, I just have the question on the last item, leave, not the last item, 15 and 16. Oh, I, I apologize, I have asked this question about the timetable for number 15, which is the community engagement piece. That question has been answered, which will be in the next few months. So there are any further discussion items or questions on any items? Any objections to the motion? Okay, we will attach a unanimous roll in the affirmative. Next, next item?
Read the summary.
Oh, we do have to read the summary of the agenda items that were, have been approved.
Summary of agenda action items. 1, approval of warrants. 2, approval of an award to Riddell All-American. 3 through 5, approval of change orders. 6, approval of change orders per board report 24-79. 7, approval and award to Kami. 8 through 11, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P12. 12, approval of financial statement. 13, approval of 2024, 2025 superintendent goals. 14, approval of an award to Byram and Fisk. 15, approval of an award to Quinn Evans. 16, approval of donations.
Thank you.
Trustee El-Jahami? So I am, trying to get familiar with the, with the agenda, and so the motion includes the evaluation.
Correct.
Part of it. So I do want to make a comment on it.
Sure.
So one of the challenges that I have is, and I respect Glenn, you know, very much, and I know he's doing a great job, the evaluation is done before the new trustees are in, so we're kind of approving something that we had no input on. And it makes it a challenge because it's not that we don't agree with that, but it's a challenge because it's something that we're being asked to approve. So I had asked what the process is, and Irene has been gracious enough to help me. There's no abstain in this. And the reason I say that, and I'm just going to make my comments known on what I think the evaluation lacks and what it needs in the future. And what it needs is smart goals with specific measurables. So when I looked at it, and I saw a lot of good things, but how do you measure the accomplishment? Everything is subjective, you know, short of the, the district goals. Everything is subjective, and so as a board, it's going to be how you feel, you know, on something. So I would ask, in the future, for evaluation, that smart goals would actually be used with specific numbers and goals for certain things. You can't do it for everything. There, there are some things like relationship building, you can't measure it. You know, that's a given. For some things, like improvement in certain type of proficiencies, or attendance is an example, for lack of a, an example, you know, improving our attendance. You know, there has to be something that you refer to, because at the end of the day, it's, it's actually to the benefit of Glenn, it's being fair, to be able to judge fairly without really being subjective or your opinion. Either you like the superintendent or don't like him, and that's how you're going to rate the superintendent. So I would ask that we do a little better job in the future to put smart goals. Given that we haven't been a part of it, we're just going to move forward, because it's, it's a long process that the team has been going through since October, actually since probably August, looking for help, but it's been going on for a while. So for me to come here and say, "No," it doesn't make sense, but I just want to give my feedback on how I felt when I saw that. So, that's my comment.
Thank you, trustee El-Jahami. I, I'd just like to mention something, that the evaluation for the superintendent does have a lot of metrics. Now, many of the goals, as you said, might be subjective of how each trustee would rate the superintendent, but if you look at the breakdown, we do have numbers there that he has to meet, or at least the entire district has to meet. I'd like to take those comments and feedback for, definitely for next year's evaluation, and take that to the evaluation committee for consideration.
Yeah. If, if I could just add, if you look at the strategic goals, so you, the district numbers, whether it's proficiences and so on, I, I see those, but for the strategic goals, unless you walk me through it, I didn't see anything. So that's, that's an offline discussion that we could have, and, you know, the, the board has been gracious enough to educate me and help me, but I didn't see anything. And I did ask to, for somebody to point out, but we're going to move forward, but that's what I would hope that we do.
Absolutely. Trustee Watts?
So I know that trustee El-Jahami and I spoke yesterday, and I think being a new board member on a board, it is very, it's a lot of information, and to come into your first board meeting and ask to vote on something that is just, it's, it's a lot. And so I did say that there are going to be moments, and that when we get our board briefs for those, for those who are watching, that there are going to be times where Dr. Malako puts in his anecdotal notes that speak directly to his goals. So moving forward, I only try to make sure that I highlight that, and if everyone else can do that as well, because there will be times that it's going to be monthly updates, and then as we get closer to his evaluation, he'll give us those anecdotal notes as well. The state did change it. I feel like just as, well, we had a good rhythm, the change, the state did change it and make it a little bit more equitable for, so that it's similar for the superintendent and our administrators and our teachers. But yes, coming into it, it can be a little bit overwhelming as to where you find all of this information. Obviously, we are depend, some of it can be measurable, some of it is not measurable. I always lean into how much data can we possibly have, when sometimes it's too much. But yes, I think moving forward, if you're okay with that, I'll try to make sure that I also highlight when those opportunities are as well, to see when it's measured.
And, and I'm going to be clear, it's not, it's not overwhelming.
Oh, it was for me, though.
With the support system that I've been given, it's not overwhelming, and I do have the background, but my point is, unless you show me, and I've asked, I don't see it. So we have to move forward, and, and I, I have reached out, and, and nobody could show me where those measurables are.
Sure.
So unless you could show me, President, then that's a different story. But my point is accountability for anything, for all of us. We have to, we have to be able to show something that is not subjective.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Trustee, Dr. Malako?
Thank you. Yeah, and I welcome that. You know, now it's going into 10 years of dealing, working with the evaluation and the board, welcome the numbers. This year was a unique situation because state law changed for not only me, but for teachers, for administrators. So normally, the goals would be approved in October, but we were kind of behind because everyone, you know, the student growth data changed. I welcome it, we welcome the numbers, I agree. One of the things I think if you would like is we could set up a meeting for you with either myself and Ms. Farage and Dr. Patterson to go over some of it, but I think the board members that have been on there know that when it comes to the final, as you will see, and that's where we were trying to get to the point, and I appreciate trustee Watts, who's leading the committee, of kind of narrowing down, because you get a lot of data and information that you will see that I provide. And so I think one of the things that's always been a struggle is that student growth piece, but it's not just for the superintendents, it's also the, you know, the teachers and the administrator. And this year, it changed from 40% to 20%. And part of it happened through the legislature, so we're all kind of working, you know, through it. And so I welcome it and welcome the ideas, and, you know, we'll continue to work moving forward. And I think some of the things we came up with this time were because of directly meeting with the full board and then the committee that kind of directed what was measured per se. It was actually, I think, you know, Ms. Farage bringing ideas and the board kind of directed that.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I just wanted to share.
Yeah.
Just because we have not been engaged in, for obvious reasons, because we're not elected yet. So thank you.
Sure. All right. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is discussion item of a 30-minute time limit, but we have no items there.
Correct.
Next item is Board of Education business. Did I read all four of these in a row? One at a time? Okay, number one, acknowledgement of correspondence.
President Berry, you've received any information that you'd like to share that we haven't discussed prior, or anything that you received that we did not receive as president for the former year? Okay.
Just for our new board members, this is the time if we were, say, reached out by a parent earlier in the day, that this was when we would share it. Obviously, going forward, the process is that if you were receiving an email by a parent, best practice is to forward it now to President Mosop and CC, the rest of us, so that we are all given the information, and that President Mosop will respond on behalf of the board for us.
Not just parents, any community.
Correct. Yes, yes. But that's, this is where acknowledgement of correspondence happens.
I think, and I didn't miss it, I pretty much, I was forward to Malako, so I'm all caught up.
Okay.
Okay, next is Board Member Committee and Organization Reports.
Now, we did not have committee meetings prior to this meeting, because we did have a special closed session meeting. However, all of you have been sent a link to select which committees you'd like to be on for the calendar year. I hope that you have filled that out. If you have not, please do, because that will help me put the committees together and put whomever is going to chair each committee. In addition, I'd like to, you, until next meeting, to think about goals for the board itself. I know we just discussed superintendent goals, I'd like to also have goals for the board. I know we have set goals before. I remember 2020, there were some goals that were set, and that have been followed each meeting as well. So if you can think about two to three goals until the next meeting, and we can bring them to be discussed here and, and approved, I would truly appreciate that. And I'd like to also meet individually with each one of you and go over these goals, so we come to the meeting prepared. Next item?
Next item is Board Member and Superintendent Commentary.
Trustee Watts?
Just something to consider, I think, moving forward. I know that with our blue cards, we had some students here. We do have a distinction between our blue cards and our maze cards. Our maze are those individuals who would like to have their voices heard, but they don't necessarily want to speak. So Secretary Zahar, going forward, if you see a maze card, you just read that on their behalf. But I think if we could have a distinction for those who are students, number one, so that it could give us an indication, if we do have students, can we change the agenda to move them earlier in the agenda so they could leave? Whether or not that's just doing a quick review of, on the cards, blue cards, to see if we have students, or a color distinction, just so that we're being mindful of their time.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. Any other commentary?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would be in favor of moving citizen comments just to the beginning of every, you know, closer to the top of every meeting anyway. I mean, I, you know, I, I understand that maybe sometimes we want people to hang around the meeting so they don't leave right away, but people have things to do, and I think it might be good to move these things up just more to the top of the meeting in general.
So we have in the past, trustees Zahar, if we do have a large amount of people who do speak, we can have, we have done that in the past.
And one of the reasons, because I've been on the board the longest, and we used to have it all the way at the very end of the meeting for that very reason, to keep people in, and that, and that was not in the best interest of our, our community's ability to connect with us. Where it's at right now gives an opportunity, if we know there's going to be a conversation about a topic, we can first present information before community members come up to speak, so that they have a better understanding and fuller information. So if you move them to the very beginning, then they don't have an opportunity to hear and digest some of those, because we generally do not respond on the spot to community blue cards, so that we don't end up with a lot of discussion, dissension between community members. We have other ways of commenting to them after the fact. So, that's kind of why it's, we kind of, we've worked with it over the years. And that's why it's landed where it is right now.
Sure. I just figure most people come to a meeting. I mean, they have to have their cards in before the meeting kind of starts anyway. So, we can always move it back in a particular meeting if we need to. I just think having it near the top would just be more respectful of everyone's time. That's all. And, you know, they're usually coming to speak on something that's not necessarily hap, not, they don't need to hear much from us, you know. They kind of know what they want to talk about already, usually, most of the time. So, we could always move it back if needed. But I just think putting it up near the front might just be a little bit more efficient for everybody. So, but anyway, that's just what I thought.
We'll definitely take that feedback and work with the superintendent to see if we can move it up. And definitely, whenever there are students, we want to hear from them first. And we want to send them home quickly. Any other commentary?
Just a simple one. Thank you for the gift.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Go on. Next item?
Request for information and/or future agenda items.
So, this is a section where if you have anything that you would like to be presented next meeting, this is the opportunity to ask for the superintendent so we can place it on the agenda. Any requests?
Just a point of clarification. So, this is not the only opportunity to get something on the next meeting, right?
Absolutely. You can bring anything to my attention and to Dr. Malako, and we can put it on the agenda. Dr. Malako?
Can I just add? Two, if you have a request that is not necessarily a formal thing at a board meeting, but just information, you're talking to me. Or if you're, you know, he's sending me an email. What will happen is I'll put it, I'll, we'll try to get that information and then we'll put it in board briefs for the full board. So, if it's not brought up here and you requesting it just because we had a meeting, I'll take the notes and we'll get that information at the Thursday board briefs. So...
Okay. Other future meeting dates? And before that, I know January 20th is Martin Luther King Junior Day. And that is observed in our school district as a celebration of his service and his life dedication to civil rights. And I'd like to also thank our students in advance for committing their day to service as well in various community service projects. I know the student council is doing some great things with Martin Luther King Junior Day. So...
President Moses, before we, and I do have something that I had asked for a couple of months ago. And we were discussing sports today. Whether or not we had, I wanted to look into our female sports. But since we have baseball here as well,